Okay, Ms. Dana, when you are ready to begin, you can go ahead. I'm gonna be in the background clicking the slides to cue you up.
Okay, thank you, Marquis. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Residents to Preserve Public Housing City Council briefing. Welcome you all. And we will begin with our presentation. About RPPH, the Residents to Preserve Public Housing, or RPPH, is a citywide resident-led group of public housing resident leaders, including members of the NYCHA Citywide Council of Presidents, C-COP, Board. We aim to preserve public housing by advocating for adequate funding, improving quality of services, and increasing residents' decision-making authority. Next slide. Here is our agenda for today. First, we will have a welcome, and then our keynote speaker will come to the mic. We will then have our 2021 City Council pledges to residents by our members present, and an open discussion, and then a closing announcement and a closing message by Mr. Reginald Bowman.
Thank you, Ms. Dana. And before we go to our keynote speaker, can you say just a couple of words about, of course, while we're having this briefing and what the purpose is and what we hope to gain out of today's meeting?
With the onslaught of new council members that are coming in, we wanted to have a forum in which they could sit with residents and get leaders to discuss the direction they need to proceed for public housing. As dealing with the impending blueprint and transition changes, residents have a lot to say and are concerned about our future in public housing. So this will be a great opportunity for those council members present to express their position regarding public housing.
Thank you. And I know that your audio was a little staticy. So if you missed what Ms. Dana was saying, again, today's City Council briefing is to meet and have an open discussion with the new incoming City Council members. There'll be thirty-five new council members at least joining the council in January. And we want to make sure that you get your directions as council members from residents. The Residents to Preserve Public Housing is a citywide group with residents all across the city, including members of the Citywide Council of Presidents who are present today. Shout out to Crystal Hudson for just joining us. Thank you so much. She'll be resident in Brooklyn in the City Council, and we'll hear more from her today as well. Thanks for joining us, Crystal. And now I'll pass the mic back to you, Ms. Dana.
Just going to the mic and welcome our keynote speaker for the day, former council member and first person to ever chair the City Council's Committee on Public Housing, Ms. Rosie Mendez. From Murphy.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I also want to add, for people who didn't know, that I'm a former resident of public housing. Lived twenty-five years in Williamsburg Houses in Brooklyn. So first, I'm going to start off with a couple of statements. And these, I always used to tell my residents, my constituents, and also some of the kids when I used to go into the public schools. In order to know where you're going, you need to know where you've been. And so you need to know the trajectory of public housing. In this case, the trajectory of public housing and why we are in the, where we are today is as a consequence of what happened when public housing was created. And then the other thing I tell everyone is the more things change, the more they stay the same. So I'm going to ask Marquis to share a screen. He's going to play a little news clipping for you. And then I want you guys to try to figure out what year that appeared on the news.
Tenants are fighting to save subsidized housing in one of the most expensive cities in the world. Tonight, they are rallying to protest cuts to the city's housing budget. Christine Persicetti joins us live from City Hall with more. Christine?
Linda, hundreds rallied here at City Hall demanding more money for public housing. They say government funding is shrinking, and they're afraid if the city doesn't step in, they might be forced out.
I've always liked living here.
Seventy-seven-year-old Betty Brassel has lived in this apartment at the Jacob Rees Housing Project for nearly fifty years, but she says things have changed for the worse.
It is a little scary. It makes me very nervous and everybody else that we could lose our homes.
What do we want? What do we want?
Hundreds rallied at City Hall Park tonight to fight for funding to save public housing.
We are not asking for money for luxuries. We are asking for the money that it takes to run these developments.
They're calling on the city to pay thirty million dollars a year to prevent the possibility of housing projects being sold and to help them operate on a day-to-day basis.
It's the money that is used to pay for staff, to clean the buildings. It's the money that's used to make repairs. It's the money that is used to run the developments, to provide light in the buildings, to make sure that the buildings don't fall into disrepair.
They say since the housing authority has a multimillion-dollar budget deficit, maintenance staff has been cut, and many residents say these buildings are deteriorating.
The front doors are always broken. The elevators are always breaking. It's always dirty. It's always a mess.
A mess Betty wants cleaned up so she can stay in the home she loves.
This is where I am. It was almost like it was meant to be for me in the Lower East Side.
And tenants say if they don't get the money this year, they'll be back here next year and the year after, and so on, until they do. Harry?
All right, Christine.
Thank you, Marquis. So I was going to ask you what year that happened, but it actually had the year in there. And that was two thousand and seven. And essentially, we're back every year fighting, trying to get money. We were trying to stop the privatization. We are now down that privatization road. So to get back to the history and where we've been, I think it's important for people to understand that public housing was never the intention of the federal government. It was started, or maybe it was the intention of a few people, but they knew it would be a hard sell. And it was started as a work program. It was after, it was part of the New Deal program. With the New Deal, we have some great programs that came out of that. Social Security, public housing, actually, minimum wage did not exist prior to then. And a forty-hour work week didn't exist prior. All that came out of the New Deal. But after the Great Depression, we needed to stimulate work. So they created the Public Works Program, and part of it was construction. And they started building public housing. The first public housing was built in nineteen thirty-three in Georgia. And then the first one in New York is First Houses, located in the Lower East Side, and that was built in nineteen thirty-five, or it was renovated, because they were actually existing buildings that did not comply with the housing code. And if you've been to Astor Place, it's named after this guy who's very rich, Vincent Astor and his family. And what he did, instead of renovate the buildings and get them up to code, he donated it to the city. And the city used that as the first public housing, and it renovated it. And actually, if you ever walk past First Houses, you will notice that they knocked out one building in between the other buildings so that they can comply with the light and air regulations of the city. But that was all, and there's a plaque in front of First Houses that states that this was built under the Federal Works Program Act. So it wasn't until nineteen thirty-seven that the two congressmen Wagner and Stegall kept pushing to make public housing, you know, under a housing act and not as part of this federal works program. They were successful in nineteen thirty-seven. And then the first two houses, public housing, that was built in New York City, was Harlem River Houses in Manhattan and Williamsburg Houses in Brooklyn, where I am from, where I grew up. So this was done under the National Industrial Recovery Act of nineteen thirty-three. It's important to see this, to see how things keep progressing and how it's affected public housing. So I already told you, this was supposed to be a work program. After First Houses, actually, I want to go back. They never renovated any other existing housing. They started building housing from the ground up because it was cheaper. So renovating took more time. And even back then, they did special things at First Houses just to keep people working. So if you're able to ever walk inside past the gates, you will see that there's all kinds of architecture inside that they did just to keep the workers busy. So the National Industrial Recovery Act was to help people get jobs during the Great Depression. Eventually, Wagner Stegall passed the Housing Act in nineteen thirty-seven, and public housing was funded by the federal government. Through the years, the city and state created public housing. It was in New York City, managed by NYCHA, that was created by the state. And it's a public benefit corporation, is controlled by the mayor of the City of New York. And under the state's public housing law, it has federal oversight and at this point receives federal and city funding. It used to receive state funding. And the state actually created a lot of public housing throughout the state. And in New York City, there were a little over a dozen state-created public housing that, and I believe it was during the Giuliani years, the state stopped funding public housing altogether. And so we have no state funding at this point. NYCHA actually sued in court to get the state to provide funding, and they lost that case. So the burden of public housing has been on the city. The feds keep giving less and less money, and they keep changing a lot of the regulations and the funding formula, which has had a negative effect on NYCHA, which is the largest public housing authority in the nation. The next big act that impacted public housing was the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of two thousand and nine that was passed, sort of what people are calling the Great Recession. And President Barack Obama passed that and put a lot of funding in for public housing. Under that, the state-created housing in New York City was allowed to convert a certain amount of its units to Section Eight to help with the fact that it didn't get funding from the state to generate some money. That was very slow in happening and wasn't getting all the funding into NYCHA that it needed. And the reason why I bring this up is because, again, what happened in two thousand and nine with the recession is that there was an economic impact to the nation, and people were hitting high rates of unemployment. And thus, that was passed to help the nation. And there was a portion of it that was specific language that went to all public housing authorities and was supposed to help New York City, but really didn't do what it needed to do. As we get to the end of two thousand and thirteen, then-mayor Bloomberg, who is term-limited, was trying to, under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, trying to convert other buildings and build on public housing so that they could have a funding stream. It's something we fought him on. And then, you know, we lobbied him to let de Blasio decide which, well, you know what's happened now, right? Thinking that we were going to get something better. What Bloomberg was proposing, though, was interesting because when you look at some of the differences in his, he was first planning just to build on public housing land in the underutilized land, and that's happening now in some places. And under that plan, NYCHA would retain a forty, fifty-one percent ownership. What's happened under de Blasio, it's now fifty percent. And NYCHA had told me during the de Blasio years that I was in the council that it really doesn't make a difference because, you know, the developer cannot sell, cannot do anything without NYCHA. But then why did it change from fifty-one to fifty? There is still something there, and I am wary of it. And I don't know, in the future, long after we're here, I think, you know, certainly, public housing as we know it is not going to continue to be public. And it may change, and down the future, who knows if some of these buildings will be sold. The other big difference between the Bloomberg proposal of privatization and what's happening now under de Blasio is that Bloomberg, this was just post-Sandy, was putting into these contracts of sale with these private developers that they needed to do resiliency work, bring generators and bring certain things into the developments as part of being given that forty-nine percent, what was going to be forty-nine percent ownership of these buildings. And that's not something we have now. And there was a different series of different types of affordable housing, which are currently, you know, in city programs, there was an eighty-twenty component, a fifty-fifty component, and a one-hundred percent affordable component. And he was trying, in those bigger developments where they were going to build multiple buildings, ensure that they had each one of those in their plan. So let me just look at some of my notes here. So today, you know, the federal government in two thousand and twelve, I believe, created RAD, the Rental Assistance Demonstration. In New York City, New York City's version of RAD is called PAT, Permanent Affordability Commitment Together. I think this is just, you know, window dressing. They just changed the name so that it could sound better to people. You will see this throughout government. Whenever there's a scandal, they will change the name of the agency. So that has happened with ACS. That used to be, I don't even know what it's, I can't even remember what it was before, but with Children's Services, and they've changed the name. Also, the Police Department, in looking at police corruption, they've changed the name of AID, you know, the Internal Affairs Department, and they keep changing it, but they don't really do a lot in terms of exposing those issues. We are now, in the federal government, post this pandemic, again, in another economic crisis where there's been record levels of unemployment. And President Joe Biden is trying to pass a three-and-a-half-trillion Economic Recovery Act called the Build Back Better. That was introduced in September in the House of Representatives, and it's still being negotiated. And they've just recently had a hearing in the Senate, and they were doing an analysis of the impact, what it would, you know, do for Americans and what it would do to the debt that the United States currently has. So as you see, some of these programs at the federal level that infused money or has had some portion that has infused money into public housing is always back from an economic recovery, from high unemployment. And now, what I see as the privatization of public housing is as a consequence of the fact that people don't, or some of those legislators, do not believe that public housing and housing is a right. And so that's how we find ourselves in the problems that we've been. Before I left the City Council, after Bloomberg left office and de Blasio came in, he, like overnight, took some of these programs that then became the fifty percent ownership. And they started with buildings, NYCHA buildings, that had Section Eight funding. And they started that privatization. Two of them happened in my district, Compost Plaza. Part of the development was funded with federal funds, and the other was funded with city and fed funding to build the housing. So the part that got the Section Eight was the one that was converted to private management. And the big issues that happened after that, I mean, there was, they did a lot of repairs, but then they also did some window dressing. So if you ever walk by there on Avenue C, you will see that some of the buildings have like this grayish covering that they put on it, which was just to distinguish it from the regular public housing, for lack of a better word, regular public housing. And it had no value of improvement, except, like I said, it was window dressing just to make it look different. And as time went on, it was, we were still getting complaints of residents as some of the repairs, major, major capital improvements coming through, that their other repairs, like a leaky faucet and so forth, were not being done by the new private developers. And they would call the NYCHA repair hotline for repairs, and they were being told by NYCHA that they were no longer under NYCHA management, and they were referred to three-one-one. And when they called three-one-one, they were being told, it's a NYCHA building. We can't take your complaint. So for years, these complaints went into a vacuum. At that point, I was no longer the Chair of the Public Housing Committee. That was my last term in office. As a consequence of politics, you know, the being on the wrong side of the speaker's race, which, you know, it is what it is. But it was not an issue that the new speaker, Melissa Mark-Viverito, and the new Chair at the time of public housing, Richie Torres, really took NYCHA to task. And part of it, part of it just really was that Melissa was working very closely with de Blasio and didn't make issues of certain things that I feel should have been made an issue of. And that, quite frankly, if it had been another mayor in office, maybe there, you know, an issue would have been made of it. You know, I don't even know right now if that issue ever got resolved. I'm assuming it has, but it had taken my last four years in the council and was still a problem when I left the council. So right now, under PAT, the city's version of RAD, they're planning to convert one-third of the public housing units to private management, a little over sixty thousand units. And one of the things that I was complaining about, not just with what happened with Compost Plaza, because by the time the residents and myself and other elected officials from that, that had these buildings in their districts found out about it, it was already a done deal. Which now, after eight years, I can tell you is how de Blasio has done a lot of things. He, and I'm just going to be honest, because Compost Plaza is owned by Tri-Borough Partnership, which is comprised of two developers, L&amp;M Development and BFC Partnership. And L&amp;M Development had friends in the de Blasio administration. They got a lot of housing deals to build, to take over NYCHA, but a lot of NYCHA developments, but also to build housing in other parts of the city. And that was a consequence of who they knew, and they got their foot in the door. And not necessarily through an RFP process or giving the appearance of an RFP where they were then chosen. At the time, I kept bringing up the issue that this was a significant change. And under the Significant Amendment, needed public hearings and needed to be announced to the NYCHA residents to be able to attend the hearings. And it's interesting, to, you know, to this day, things that should be considered a significant amendment are not. And therefore, they get no public hearing, or they get the appearance of a public hearing where they do very minimal outreach and don't really engage the residents. So that is something that really needs to be worked on. And as we look and keep continuing the fight to get more funding into public housing from the city and the feds, to realize that what's happening now came back as a consequence of unemployment and economic problems, and not necessarily the idea that people deserve affordable housing and a decent place to live with repairs. And certainly, the underfunding of NYCHA has led to lots of issues that have affected the buildings completely. And it's going to get to a point where some of these buildings are going to be unreparable. And so that is it for my presentation.
Thank you so much. Rosie, you have always been a mentor and someone who has provided great guidance to me. I was just sharing with a friend the time I came with my plan to run programming in our community center. And without knowing exactly who you were, you just came and just embraced and looked right into my plans for a community center and just gave me so much positive feedback. I had no idea you were a council member at the time, because that's the way you live. And so I'm so excited that you have agreed to be here today and share some of your wisdom and advice to the next incoming body of City Council members. I hope while you are on this call as council members that you are paying close attention. And I hope, Rosie, that you will continue to stay a little bit longer on this call so that you can be a part of the discussion that we're going to have right after we list out our pledges. be a part of the discussion that we're gonna have right after we list out our pledges. Um, Ms. Jenna, did you want to say anything before we move on? Thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna share uh, my screen again. Let's see if I could do this. All right. So I'm sharing my screen so that we can go over. All right. So if you have been lucky enough to secure your nomination for city council, then we have uh, some demands and some recommendations for you as you prepare to take office in January. We are asking you to make a pledge to the residents of public housing today, live on Facebook and record it. I'm gonna go through these pledges and then we're gonna have some time for you to respond um, to these pledges. Um, and I look forward to hearing from each and every one of our council members and council members to be on this call today. So I'm gonna quickly go through this and then I'm gonna open us up for an open chat. So the first uh, pledge that we are asking is we are asking, will you commit to advocating for at least two billion dollars annually for operating expenses? And refuse to sign off on any city budget that does not include at least two billion dollars for operating subsidies? Please take full note of the word at least. We would love to have more funding. Uh, but we think on a minimum that the city should be providing at least two billion dollars annually. And that no budget should be passed without having that item in the budget. Next. Will you commit to advocating for at least one billion dollars annually for forming resident management corporations and supporting existing resident management corporations? Resident management corporations is a vehicle to give residents more authority over where they live and how they live. Allowing residents to take over various operations within their development, ranging from the recycling process all the way up to the full management of their development. And so we are starting, and there are many TA presidents on this call who are looking forward to building resident management. And we're looking for support from the city council. Will you commit to monitoring, to the monitoring of not just capital projects, spending and hiring of residents through the section three program? Will you commit to annual comprehensive and independent audit of city funds allocated to NYCHA? And publicly release audit findings showing how and where funding received by NYCHA has been spent? Will you commit to holding regular hearings regarding NYCHA matters within NYCHA districts, working directly with resident leadership on setting agendas and dates? Too often, city council hearings are held in the most inconvenient times and most inaccessible to our residents. And so we are asking not for something that is new. We are asking for something that has been done in the past. We have seen council members hold hearings within districts and we're asking for that to be a permanent fixture. Just wanna let these people in. The blueprint. Let me be clear. The residents to preserve public housing say no to NYCHA's blueprint for change proposal. The blueprint for change proposal was developed without the input and approval of current NYCHA residents as stipulated by, by the HUD's nine sixty-four rules and regulations. The drastic changes proposed by the blueprint have been introduced during COVID-nineteen pandemic. When we can't and still, where we couldn't and still can safely communicate the facts, information and details of this plan to NYCHA residents. The trust. A major part of NYCHA's blueprint for change proposal, the Public Housing Preservation Trust. If created by state law, will move to generate private debt using tenant protection vouchers and our buildings and homes as collateral without any protection against foreclosure. And then finally, if the blueprint is passed in combination with NYCHA's BAD PAC program, there will be no more public housing in New York City. In other words, every NYCHA unit will be converted from a section nine public housing unit to a section eight unit. We are asking, will you publicly denounce NYCHA's blueprint for change proposal? And any legislation that would implement the trust noted within the blueprint proposal? Will you communicate your support for hosting all legislative and judicial adoption of the blueprint for change proposal directly to NYCHA? The monitor and to HUD? And finally, will you commit to at least, to attending at least six RPPH meetings throughout twenty twenty-two? RPPH meets every Sunday from three to five. We come here to strategize, we come here to learn, and we come here to network. And we welcome you to be a part of this circle as we are committed to not only stopping the blueprint from moving forward, but proposing an alternative that truly represents the desires and needs of public housing residents. And so with that, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. I'm gonna ask my call facilitator to help me as we engage in this discussion over the pledges that we are asking each of you to sign. This open discussion, we're gonna prioritize, just to be clear. We are going to prioritize the elected officials and the elected officials to be on this call. We wanna hear from them. We wanna make sure that they understand exactly what challenges we are facing. So if they have any questions, we are here to answer any and all of your questions. We wanna make sure that our demands and that our pledge is clear to you and that you are able to commit to signing on to our pledge. We, I'm not limiting any resident from participating in this discussion. Um, but I do wanna make sure that we prioritize uh, so that we hear from the elected officials. As the goal of this meeting um, is to give directions to the next body of city council members. So with that, I'm gonna go uh, in order of how I see you on the screen. Um, I'm gonna give you about uh, two minutes.
Marquis, there's a question in the chat that I think will be important before you start calling on people. Uh, they wanted to know how many incoming council members are on the call? And I'll add how many elected officials are on the call on this Zoom right now.
Thank you. Uh, so being honest and transparent, um, I haven't looked through the list. I saw at least uh, three uh, council members or council members to be. What I will ask is that you introduce uh, yourself in the chat and I'm also gonna go through uh, the list now as I see you. Um, like with every meeting, this is a team process. So if I forget someone on the call, I'm gonna ask you guys to help me and say, hey, you forgot this person. Let's make sure we get them on the mic. So with that, I'm gonna give each of the elected officials uh, roughly two minutes uh, to speak and respond. And I'm gonna start uh, with Ms. Athia Stevens, representing Bronx District sixteen. Athia, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here. Hi, guys. Peace, family. How's everybody doing today? Um, I'm very happy to be here with everyone. Um, so as you guys know, most folks know that I um, and one of the first people who was in this group and, and, and started out because Princess had a vision. And I wanted to support her and I know I've been missing for a really long time, but here we are and I'm happy to be back and, and, and here to see everyone. Um, and thank you for all of the support that you guys gave me and allowed me to step away so I could like actually get into council. So I'm just happy to be back with you guys. Um, I did see your lists, um, your, your pledge that you guys wanted us to see. And I just wanna start off by saying, one, you guys know I a hundred percent support RPPH. I believe in the work that you guys are doing. I believe that residents, residents should be heard. Like this is your homes that you guys live here. And so whatever you say, we should be listening to you and taking you, um, taking our direction from you. Um, so I am definitely willing to always listen, be a part of it. Some of the things um, in the pledge, um, I, I can't say I fully commit to everything because one, I cannot say I can commit to six meetings. That's just I can barely commit to seeing my child regularly, um, let alone committing to six meetings every Sunday. Um, but I do wanna say that there is a lot of things in there. I think that we should be working towards and working together on and getting to a place where we all can agree, agree and meeting regularly with other elected officials. Um, you know, I see that we have two of my other sisters who's ready to get to work as well on this call, Crystal and Alexa. And you know, you know, you have people who are ready to make sure and prioritize housing and public housing and to work with the residents in a, in a very real and authentic way. Um, so I'm just excited to be here and continue to listen and I will make space for my other sisters to come in and, and speak as well. So I'll be here for a little bit longer.
Thank you, Ms. Athia Stevens. I'm gonna cross it over to uh, Crystal Hudson from Brooklyn.
Thank you and hello, everyone. Um, and thank you for the presentation, Rosie. Um, really, really valuable information and I'm really glad to see we have fifty-one people on the line. Um, that's very uh, heartening and encouraging and um, exciting to know that folks are so engaged um, in an organization like this. So I am, um, similarly to Althea, I, I, I can definitely commit to most of the things on this list. What I would actually like to do is I have very strong relationships with the NYCHA presidents in my district and they were actually the first group of people to endorse me during my campaign, which is something that I'm incredibly proud of. Um, and so I wanna go back to them and just make sure we review everything. I'm almost positive they're all aligned. Um, but I just wanna make sure before I make any decisions about NYCHA and commit to anything pertaining to NYCHA, that I'm bringing them on board and not making a decision independent of them. So um, if you would allow me to, you know, I'll go back to them, have a conversation and then follow up with you. And Marquis, if it's possible to get, is, is there a pledge written like uh, on a website or can you send me maybe the information? I, I was furiously writing notes as fast as I could keep up with you, but I don't know that I captured everything. I just wanna make sure I have.
Yes.
I'm District thirty-five. Somebody, somebody asked, sorry, District thirty-five includes the neighborhoods of Crown Heights, Prospect Heights, Fort Greene, Clinton Hill, a little bit of Bed-Stuy and the five NYCHA developments that I have in my district are Ingersoll, Barriget, Walt Whitman, uh, Lafayette Gardens and Atlantic Terminal.
Thank you. Um, yes, I will be sending you over a full packet which will include our pledge and some background information. Um, so look out for that.
Perfect. That's great. And you know, I've been uh, vocally opposed to RAD and to, you know, all the tools they're trying to use to, to turn public housing into private housing. So just wanna throw that out there, um, that fundamentally I'm, I'm absolutely aligned. Thanks again for having me here.
Thank you. Please stay on and continue to be in discussion. Um, the next uh, person I'm going to ask to the mic is Alexa Aviles. Please tell me I said that correctly.
You're close enough, Aviles. Hi, everybody. I'm sorry. I thought I was gonna have to disconnect. I was running up the stairs. Um, but uh, thank you so much uh, for the presentation, Rosie. Definitely, uh, I went to public housing school. Um, and learned a lot. Uh, so thank you for that. Um, and for your longstanding leadership of public housing. I did not grow up in public housing, but much of my family lived in public housing. My grandma was definitely one of the first public housing residents in one of the developments in the Lower East Side. So I have a long history. Um, so absolutely committed to fighting for public housing, absolutely aligned with um, fighting against RAD PAC, fighting against the blueprint. Um, we've already started some of that work and even demanding that NYCHA, you know, meet, meet obligations around language of accessibility and making sure that, you know, elections are, and every information is accessible to residents. So I'd like, like my, like my colleagues, pretty much a good portion. Oh, um, thank you, Reginald. I'm sorry, I jumped in. Um, I will be hopefully representing and will have the privilege and honor of representing District thirty-eight in South Brooklyn, which is Sunset Park, Red Hook and portions of a bunch of other neighborhoods and the public housing development. In my neighborhood, in my district would be Red Hook Houses, um, East and West. Um, and so very, very large development facing some real, real challenges. Um, but tenacious, amazing residents. So I, um, I, uh, hold on. S- sorry, I'm trying to manage the chats and talk at the same. What appears relates to infill? Oh, absolutely. I'm opposed to infill. Um, I have always been opposed uh, to infill projects. We know it's part of this privatization scam. We know that, um, you know, it's, it's a way to cipher public assets into private hands. So, um, I have long been opposed to infill since it first came on, on, onto the scene. Um, but I, I was just gonna say, I am absolutely aligned and committed to fighting for public housing residents, centering their voices and making sure that decisions are not made without them. And so much of the platform I'm absolutely aligned with. And like my other colleagues, definitely wanna take it back um, to, to our residents and continue this conversation and also to keep helping um, support our, um, I know, to support our residents to make more and more space for their voice, their advocacy, their ownership of the homes um, that they inhabit. So thank you so much for this forum and look forward to more conversations. And it was good to see a nice young DeMaris.
Yes, DeMaris, yeah. She's still looking good.
She's still looking good. She, she's still fighting hard.
Thank you. We, um, I'm trying to look on the list and see if we have any additional um, elected officials here. Um, so if you are here and I am missing you, feel free to come off mute and say hello. Go on once. Go in twice. All right. So what I am gonna do now is I am going to fully open up uh, the discussion for any of our public housing residents, advocates and leaders um, on the call who wanna say a few things. Um, I'm gonna start because last time I missed you. Um, so I'm gonna start with you this time Mercedes Jennings, who was representing uh, Senator Mike Denaras's office.
Hi, Marquis. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much. Um, so again, as you know, his position has not changed. It remains that due to the fact that the blueprint, poop, the, the blueprint for change um, legislation still has not answered um, many of the questions concerning the trust and um, what happens if NYCHA, you know, forecloses or has, can't pay their end of the debt. Um, you know, he does not want to have any of his constituents um, out on, on the street or, you know, lose their housing. Um, also, there's still a lot of questions that need to be answered within the legislation and many of them are still not being answered. So due to that factor, he does not wanna sign on to any legislation that would in any way put any of his constituents in danger of losing their housing. So as of right now, his position remains the same. Um, he was actually one of the first senators to write um, a press release stating that he opposes the blueprint in um, when it, when they first presented in December of twenty, I believe twenty twenty. Um, so just making that, reiterating that and that's his stance. And I myself am also a NYCHA resident born and raised and um, in Queens and um, Senator Generis support. and um, Senator Generis support um, represents the Western Queens and the three projects that are three housing neighborhoods that are under his jurisdiction are Queensbridge Houses, Ravenswood and Astoria Houses. Thank you so much, Marquis. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, always showing up. Uh, opening up, I'm looking for folks who have their hands up or would like to ask a question or speak. Question, what infill project? Let me see if I can get that up again. Oh, can you explain what infill projects are? Let's put one of our council members in the hot seat. Crystal, you want to take a stab at this one? Putting you on the hot.
Sure, I'll, yeah, that's fine. Um, I can take it and then, you know, other folks can chime in if there's anything that I left off. Infill projects is is when NYCHA essentially takes um, property on NYCHA uh, takes a parcel of NYCHA property and sells it to a private developer. Um, I actually had an infill project in my in my district um, which is at Ingersoll and uh, essentially what happened was a private developer was able to lease the land. I believe these leases are for about, you know, ninety-nine years. And yes, um, thank you, Karen. So like parking lots um, have been used what they consider to be uh, under or or underutilized or nonutilized um, pieces of the property on NYCHA developments. And so, you know, the it's sort of a a double edged sword, right? Because in my district, um, the the development that was built at Ingersoll is a one hundred percent affordable housing uh, building. It's one hundred percent for seniors. Um, the preference was given to uh, NYCHA residents in Brooklyn specifically. I think, I forget what the the percentage breakdowns were, but it was let's say something like thirty percent were to go to uh, Brooklyn NYCHA residents. And then, you know, another like ten percent were to go to NYCHA residents um, across the city. There's also um, you know, a a strong LGBTQ population in in the development. And so of course, you know, we need affordable senior housing. We need one hundred percent affordable housing that's developed. But uh, I don't believe it should be private developers who are developing those projects on public land um, and using public assets to do so. Um, you know, if we have space that we feel like is underutilized or not utilized, we should be building that as a city um, and taking our own property and developing one hundred percent affordable housing um, and not turning that over to private developers. Um, and yes, uh, other folks are chiming in that most infill leases are ninety-nine years and pay a dollar or or thereabouts. Um, this is the same with, you know, the air rights, sale of air rights and and so forth. There are all these different tools and tactics being used to, you know, uh, privatize our public assets, our public property and our public housing. Um, and that's not the way we should be going about creating affordable housing.
Thank you so much for that. You're making my job easier. Uh, I got Karen Lita uh, who wants to chime in.
Thank you, Marquis. Good afternoon, everyone. Eric Adams is in favor of these infill projects. Um, as a city council member, what can you do or what can you say to convince him otherwise that this is not the way to go and it's not profitable for um, residents living in public housing?
I love that question. Uh, let's start with Alexa. And please give me your name because I I know I said it wrong again.
Oh, sorry. Fighting with the mute. Um, Alexa, no, no, you said the name right. That is a really great question. Um, I think, you know, how affordable housing of great concern across the city and we know we are at odds on what that approach should be um, in terms of how whether private developers are developing it or the city should be developing it. Um, we're gonna have to demonstrate over and over again that um, and this has already been demonstrated, right? That these privatization schemes don't work, right? Residents are still very much at risk, if not at more risk. We've seen that with and all the kind of RAD situations that are getting documented where people are being picked up even faster. Um, so we're gonna have to do the full court press that we've been doing uh, with the mayor um, and continue to circle the the wagons and really lift up resident voice and make sure that he is hearing from the residents that this is not the way to move forward and we have to protect public housing. So I think all the things that um, you know, residents have been fighting for and we will have to stand with you and behind you and lift you up in every way that we can um, and provide the resources to keep making the case.
Thank you. If you are just joining, we are talking with city council members, the next body of city council members. Uh, and we are talking about what it is we need for public housing come twenty twenty-two. Uh, so we had a list of pledge items on there and I'm so um, grateful for you all being completely honest and transparent about where you stand. Um, I will go through them one last time before we check out just so that you can see them. And of course, we'll be sending them to you. Um, I'm opening up the conversation for all residents at this point. So if you do have a question um, or comment, uh, please raise your hand or you may also come off mute. Going once.
Oh, hi. Oh, hi, Marnie Alasa. Can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
So um, you know, in in Fulton houses and Elliott Chelsea houses, uh, the tenants are really against privatization, but their TA presidents, Miguel Asavido and Darlene Waters are completely, you know, you know, totally for privatization. And, you know, how to, how do, how do those tenants get help? Um, you know, Eric Botcher, the council elect, uh, he's been silent against privatization. Um, you know, honestly, all the West Side electeds, Corey Johnson, uh, you know, during the mayor's uh, NYCHA working group that was held in secret for about a year, which is against the open meetings law. Uh, you know, they, no, but the tenants were screaming it like against all privatization. And, you know, none of those West Side electeds ever listened to them. So how how do they get um, any sort of like relief? And I know I'm asking, you know, I'm I know I'm asking, you know, you guys are responsible for your district, but how like, how how do they get any help? The community board was totally pro-privatization. I mean, you know, it's really, it's really hard.
So I I'm never gonna speak for anyone else, but I will say this, one of the the things, power is always in numbers, I think, continue to organize and finding like-minded people, finding groups like this and other groups to kind of uplift that there's residents who are against um, the privatization. I think sometimes, a lot of times, folks are not as vocal as they need to be. I myself, I always say, just because you're the loudest voice in the room does not mean you're the only one who has anything to say. But a lot of people do not operate in that way. So to to be honest, one of the things that I'm planning to do, especially um, with my NYCHA leaders and things like that, is to support them in a way so that they can have real leadership. And sometimes leadership, you don't have to be the type, the tenant um, leader to to have leadership. So what does that look like? How does building power um, look in your community? How do we then get those people who are against it to really come out to, you know, come to meetings, go to the community board, organize and really uplift it? And also just finding allies. And so if there's, you know, if you have electeds who are in your district who are not listening to you, finding the electeds who are aligned with some of the things you're saying and trying to reach out to them, so you can kind of get some of the support. But it does, it is hard and it's challenging and all those things.
It's really hard because all of them, all of them that like Jerry Nadler, Dick Godfrey, Gail Brewer, all of them were in the mayor's uh, NYCHA working group and they all never listened to the tenants. And I, you know, I attended three of the working groups and, you know, then they they banned me. But it was, I don't know. I mean, it's very, very difficult. Um, you know, I'm I'm thinking about trying to organize a town hall. Uh, but I I'm just not really sure, like, how do you help tenants that are against it when everything is so rigged against them, especially in District Three? You know, Corey Johnson's district. I mean, eh, they all like, they, all those elected officials really stick together. So um, you know, I don't know, but if there's any, anybody can, you know, have any, give me any ideas. I I'm all ears.
Mad- Madeline, Madeline says, get a lawyer and I am all for it. We all have to figure out. Uh, we will be hearing some discussions, so I am really thinking about what a public housing legal defense fund could look like. Um, but on the topic of funding for all three of uh, council members to be, um, we know, right? There's no question about um, the need for funding, the need for funding on city council. Um, how are you gonna go about, right, if two billion dollars is not the number, right? Or maybe it needs to be more, maybe it needs to be less depending on what the city budget is. But how do you go about determining what's a suitable number for city council um, to fund NYCHA or to sign off at, right? A hard number that you would be willing to stand behind. Uh, that's for Athia, uh, Crystal, um, and Alexa.
Um, so I would just, and and this is me just thinking, for me, it's not even about necessarily a hard number. It's more about like, what does that look like when they do get the funding, right? I think the oversight of any money going into NYCHA is probably one of the biggest issues because we know for so long NYCHA is like a a bucket with a hole in it. The more money you throw in it, it just kind of gets wasted. So for me, it's thinking about, well, how are we looking at and holding them accountable for the money that they do get and and what does that really look like?
Yeah, I I would just add that um, you know, the numbers, number one should be informed by, you know, folks like you all on the call today by by residents. And also, you know, once we get in and we have a better sense of what the numbers actually look like and what the budget really looks like and we can go through, you know, line by line. Um, you know, certainly our city budget should not be balanced on the backs of our public housing residents or our students or our working New Yorkers. Um, you know, and so I think we need to find creative ways to ensure that we're investing in the people and the places that we should be investing in and and that quite honestly, we haven't invested in in a meaningful way yet.
Yeah, and I could, I agree, agree with both of my colleagues. Um, and I would, I would also add that, you know, part of the advocacy, I know I know we're focused on the city budget, but also is, you know, um, engaging in advocacy at the, with our state elected representatives. It's uncon- unconscionable that the state is not investing in public housing in the way we need it um, to be invested in. But definitely in terms of, you know, what the right number is uh, at the right time, I think definitely needs some more investigation and will absolutely be, you know, informed by the residents and finding out what what is it, where are we with our with our needs? Um, so I don't, I don't know what that number is quite yet. We're not in the office and we're not privy to a lot of the information, but at least uh, I think you have a sense of our approach.
We got some hands raising up, but I wanted to ask Rosie if you wouldn't mind chiming in on this question as well.
Um, I'm sorry, the question was about what is the ra- the correct amount of funding?
Oh, how do we, right, how do we make sure, right, that we get a sufficient amount of funding from the city council that's within reason?
You know, it's it's all uh, negotiations and you know, um, one year I fought really hard to keep all this funding in the city council uh, to not close the community centers and um, the NYCHA community centers. And I ended up losing a uh, multimillion HIV AIDS initiative that I had um, sponsored. So, you know, sometimes there are hard decisions to be made and, you know, um, it was a tough one. I I did it then, but I had the option. Um, certainly, eh, when you have a group of people working together, um, that uh, is is gonna be easier. I found it very difficult to get other colleagues in the city council um, to uh, stay focused on on some of the budget initiatives that were for NYCHA. Um, so it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of work for the incoming council members. Um, one of the things I tried to do, which I was told, you know, this was under the Bloomberg years, is to get a certain amount of capital funding that was set aside for NYCHA. Um, we didn't get that done, but I wanted that to be separate and apart from all the other capital because you know, the infrastructure of the buildings need to be maintained. I don't know if, you know, with a new speaker and a new mayor, that's something that the new council will be able to champion. Um, but I think that would go a long way um, into then getting that funding into the developments that most need it and hopefully um, stop it from going down uh, the privatization road.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Ms. Ethel and then uh, Mr. Vegetal Bowman.
Okay, good afternoon. Uh, Rosie, this question is also for you. Um, one of the challenges that is happening right now in the developments is safety and security. And my question to you, have we always had uh, NYPD monitoring public housing?
I I can answer that. So, um, there used to be a special part of the housing of of the police department that was housing police. And when you got into, you know, uh, what is it, the um, you were doing your training in the police department, you needed to choose transit, housing, or for lack of a better word, regular police. Um, and uh, at some point, it was merged altogether uh, under one police force. Um, and then when it was merged, NYCHA was paying the NYPD money for patrolling in the developments. And part of how this all started was the new, this is what, why the history is important, was under the New York City fiscal crisis when the city was broke back in the nineteen seventies. All this funding was coming into NYCHA from the feds, so the way of shipping money back into the city was NYCHA was giving money to the police to patrol just as a way of getting more money into the city um, budget. Um, but once uh, you know, the the fiscal crisis was over and uh, they they still continued uh, to pay that money uh, when they merged the three units. Um, what happened when they merged them into just one police department is they created the PSAs. Um, and they made only nine of them, two for each borough, uh, one for Staten Island. Um, and um, you know, the the reality is like, I'm from PSA three and it's just um, i- it's everything south of Thirty-Fourth Street. So, you know, they have to work with the police department on the west side to address issues because the PSA uh, and their physical location is on Avenue C. They're never gonna make it over to, you know, um, the other, the west side of Manhattan to address any issues over there. So um, there is this um, joining of of the systems um, of NYPD and they're supposed to be trained, get special training from NYCHA and the PSA. So I hope that answers your question.
That's as part of it. The next piece of it is, there was a development out in Brooklyn that had private security. Now, in the nine sixty-four regulations, it does say that you could have other type of security. Would that be something that I would think this, the new city council would look into because the the PSAs have lost total control. Um, and the precincts only go into some developments whenever. So they've never really functioned as one as, you know, we thought they were gonna do the merger. That merger really never happened.
This, uh, my question is, what development in Brooklyn had private?
I can't remember what it was, but I thought in the early years of being in public housing, um, there was uh, police service areas in a lot of the developments. And I'll say from where I am, we saw a And I'll say from where I am, we saw, uh, everybody had their own police in their development. And we're talking many years ago. Um, so as I was looking up for safety and security, there, there is a portion in there that talks about. So we're not married to the police even though the monies are connected.
So, um, I, there was a development um in my district that back in the day had um, uh, policing done by the hospital because it was located close to Bellevue. And um, uh, something worked out with the, with, with the city. Um, the hospital was, was putting some security in that building. That stopped. And um, and when I tried to resuscitate it, we couldn't get find where that um agreement had been made so that we can try to uh, get H and H to continue, then HHC to continue doing that. Uh, so sometimes there may be some kind of special circumstance or some kind of community benefit or, or something that might lead to that. The, the problem, and I held a hearing on this, we were talking about, um, we had people come from New Jersey and they had um cameras with a security system and, and people, you know, they had a, a very elaborate security system uh, out in New Jersey, but they also downsized and they blew up a lot of their, imploded a lot of their public housing um, prior to putting in all this security. Um, when we're talking about getting the city to um pay for private security, you know, what happens is you gotta talk about unions, you gotta talk about pensions. Uh, right now, they're downsizing and bringing down the headcounts in a lot of agencies to keep um, those numbers lower and to be able to afford to, to afford to pay people into the future their pensions. So, um, it's something that would be a really hard lift because of the, not just the financial impact in hiring these people, but the long-term financial impact and what that would mean to the city's budget.
Thank you. I'm gonna.
And let me just say this one more thing. As I said earlier, and I, and I think I want other people to know that when you were on the council your first time, you did a wonderful job supporting public housing. And people should know that you was committed and everything you said you were gonna do, you did. So you fought for us very hard in the very beginning. So you was the best one and the only one we had had for, I, I think for years, many years. So I just want people to understand that you were a good city council person for public housing on that first go around. I'm done now, Markis.
Thank you and ditto to that. Mr. Bowman?
Good evening, everyone, and um, good evening to the prospective council members and certainly, uh, it's glad to see you, Ms. Mendez. Um, I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Ms. Velez, that um, you did an excellent job in laying the foundation for there being a uh, sound representation and committee for the first time in history for public housing in the city council of New York and history. And the record needs to reflect that. Um, moving on to the question, um, and this is a question for the um, the candidates. Over the years, many people have come to the public housing community and they have always said a lot of different things that we needed to hear um, prior to the election, got elected. And then, once they got into city hall or to the state or the federal government, they found the challenges of implementing public policy and budgeting uh, quite a bit overwhelming. And here we stand today, um, still fighting for these things. So my question is, um, when you get elected, um, what are some of the plans that you, or what are some of the first steps that you plan to take uh, to address uh the issues that we are presently facing uh in public housing? And um, what would your first um hundred days in office uh, look like when it came to the uh, public housing issues that we are addressing? And that's a general question. Anyone can take it.
Let's start with Althea.
Well, um, that's a great question and my first hundred days is hopefully I make it, right? Um, but no, in all seriousness, so why not take public housing very serious? And I, and I know that a lot of times folks come in and we're all super ambitious and excited to get to work, but I'm a person who believes in coalition building. And as you guys see, we have three colleagues on our phone, but, I mean, on the line with us today. But there's a number of other people who are very much like-minded, like us. And I think us working together to ensure that we are collectively listening to the residents and coming up with suggestions because we know that being a city council, you cannot do any of this work alone. And so really building coalitions around the city council and other members to kind of have an agenda and pu- and put things together, I think is gonna be really important. And when we talk about like budget priorities and all those things, power is really in numbers and, and that's one of the things I truly believe. Um, the other thing too is me, um, I've been working with my nature leaders, um, not just in my district, but throughout the Bronx. And I, I believe I will continue to do that. I'm really big on working with my leaders to help develop and build their leadership so they can continue to organize. Um, everyone knows me as the youth development lady. So I'm really big on like, what does it look like to really engage young people? Um, to really take the leadership roles in nature developments. Um, even when you look at this call right now, there's really no young people on this, this line. And to me, that's a detriment because you guys have so much knowledge. And so we need to really be thinking about how do we build and develop young people to be taking the place that, take, not take the place, but also be doing this work in alongside you guys so that they can continue this work. And so for me, one of the things I am looking, looking forward to doing is helping and supporting some of my like, nature leaders create a junior board so they can have young people be more active in Nycha, learning the ways and so that they're not like at a deficit if something happens or someone leaves or whatever. Um, so those are some of the things that I'm looking forward to working with and building as well.
Ms. Simpson, are you there?
I, she had to, she had to leave.
Okay, so, uh, is Alex, is Ms. Vila still there?
Yes, yes, I'm here. I'm here.
She's got us too.
We just, just us. Um, so, so thank you, thank you for the question. And in fact, um, Althea, you, you just reminded me, just recently you wrote, wrote a letter to Nycha about the fact that um, young people, uh, younger than, you know, younger than eighteen can't even vote in, in resident and TA um, elections, right? Which is another form of kind of marginalizing that really powerful voice and wanting to figure out like, how do we, how do we open up elections and make them fair and more inclusive and how do, how do we bring in more voice? So, you know, I will, uh, I will say for, you know, the first hundred days, what we are definitely gonna be doing is building our offices, you know, in my district in particular. Um, where our, our houses in Red Hook is not, um, is not contiguous. Like, I don't have one contiguous district that's spread out. It's, it's like a fifteen-minute drive away. Um, and so the majority of the district is in the Sunset Park portion of district. And many of the residents have really felt ignored. And so what we've been talking a lot about is how do we make sure we have consistent presence for the residents? How do we support um continued organizing and power building of the residents? So that when we have these issues, right, that we're contending with, that, you know, people will, people will show up and will put the pressure on the electeds and on the, um, on the management, um, that we can do that together. Uh, so really, I mean, the commitment is to make sure that our office will have presence for the residents in a way that they have never had before, consistent presence, a voice and representation, like our office has to make sure we have someone uh representing from Red Hook. Um, and, and, you know, I would love that to be a person from Red Hook Houses in particular. So we're committed to that, um, to that space and representation, working with the residents that are there, there, really trying to build capacity and bring in some resources because that's been a big challenge for residents. Um, and you know, I think like Althea said, right, is collectively building, um, you know, a real strategy around how we are gonna fight to protect um, public housing across New York City. And we're gonna have to do that as a collective. And I, I'm feeling really optimistic with many of my colleagues who are really coming in with um, that same kind of value set uh and real commitment uh, to people, to working-class people, to public housing residents, to people that have often been forgotten. And if this federal money comes in, we are gonna have a lot of work to do to make sure that accountability and um, and, and I guess accountability and that the money is not um, that the money is not misused.
Thank you so much. Um, I used to, I used to talk to some houses.
Hi. Hi, good evening. Um, because is it evening or good afternoon? Anyway, so, um, I just, first of all, I wanna thank Rosie for being the best chairperson ever on the Nycha, on the Nycha committee. And for, and not only for being the Nycha, somebody needs to be quiet. I'm talking. Um, cuz it, it's interfering with my thing. Um, for not only that, but making the Nycha committee in the city council a standing committee so that there's some respect there. And I, so I thank you because it was all your hard work and respect for residents in public housing um, that allowed that to happen. So the new council people, I would, my question to you is, how are you gonna work that committee so that residents are listened to and respected in terms of what our needs really are and not what Nycha, all these outsourcing people that are in Nycha um, making decisions for us without consulting us? Thank you.
I start with Ms. Alexa.
Yeah, so I, I have never been able to witness um, some of Rosie's hearings. But the, one of the he- most recent hearings that I was participating in um, led with resident voices and had city agencies responding to the questions and concerns of the residents. And that just struck me as exactly the right balance, right? That it is the city agencies that are supposed to be responding to the residents, not the residents have to wait six hours to participate in a hearing after all the kind of talking heads do that. So I think it's really about centering the residents and making sure that the agenda is informed by the residents and that that space is meaningfully provided to the, to the, to the residents to guide the agenda. And, you know, for us, for, for the residents to hold us accountable, I am accountable to my residents. I'm accountable to the organizations and people here um, in my community. And so to, to maintain that level of accountability, I think that, that is one way I would, I would respond to that.
Thank you, Althea.
So, yeah, pretty much, um, supporting everything that Alexa said. I think that it's important to make sure that residents, leaders and residents are always in the forefront or in being heard and supported. Um, also too, I think, um, thinking about making sure that you guys are also in constant communication and contact with the chair and whoever that may be, um, and thinking about some suggestions, like as soon as we find out who the chair is because we don't know who that is right now, right, oh, that's gonna be, reaching out to that person and scheduling a meeting so that you can also have a conversation with them and, and, you know, reaching out regularly, making sure that you not only know her, but the staff so that you guys can be in constant communication. Because hearings is one thing, but we all, you, we also need to do the work outside of a hearing, right? Um, and what that looks like. And so thinking about building a, a, a strong, continuous relationship so that the concerns can be consistently heard.
Thank you. On that same note, while I'm waiting for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. While we're waiting for others to put their hand up, I think we got time for at least one or two more questions. Uh, here's a hot button topic. Um, we're gonna need a strong um, chair for the public housing committee within the city council. Um, are any of you interested in taking on that position and being appointed to be the chair of the public housing committee within the city council?
I'm thinking about it.
Say it well, please. How, what would you bring to that position?
Well, we gotta bring fire, right? Um, and we gotta bring, we gotta bring commitment. And uh, I, I, I say I'm thinking about it because Rosie has been someone that a couple of good friends have said, you need to talk to Rosie first. And I haven't talked to Rosie first, so. Um, no, but it really, I mean, I think, uh, hopefully with federal funding, hopefully that will happen. And we need to continue to uh, put pressure on our federal representatives to bring that money to uh, public housing here. Um, and deliver that, we're gonna, we're gonna need some real oversight. Um, in addition to set fire to pressure, word, serious pressure. Uh, you could tell I'm not great at the chat and the conversation at the same time. I know, I know, I know. I still haven't perfected it. You would think after all these years, uh, we got that, but I don't. Anyway, um, you know, just listen, real, real commitment to lifting up, uh, calling the question, really working with our colleagues, right? This is, it has to be in and out of hearings all the time. Uh, and you know, our residents deserve that. And they deserve to be front and center. And, you know, public housing has long been ignored. And it is the, you know, one of our greatest assets in this city. Um, and so, you know, I think, I think just straight up commitment, all day, every day.
Thank you.
I, I would like to say, hearing that Alexa wants public housing really makes my heart sing. And I say that because she radiates love, empathy and like just caring. And so that is what I truly believe public housing needs. And so if that is what she wants, let me know because I will support that because that makes so much sense. I mean, like, she really does. And I think she would be amazing at just kind of like pushing firmly, but pushing with love and getting what we need. So I think that that makes sense. It's like, oh, my God, when she said that, like. But, um, unfortunately, everybody knows I'm youth services. That is what I'm fighting for. I'm the youth development lady. I love y'all and I will support and I want to be on the committee, but not chair.
All right, I'm not seeing any more additional questions. So my last question for you two um, is around RPPH. Now, somebody says six meetings in a year or six gatherings might be too much. So what kind of commitment are you willing to make today? We want you guys to be a part of this community. As I mentioned, we meet every Sunday um, from three to five. Um, you can come once a month, you can come once every two months, once every three months. Uh, whatever makes the most sense, but we would love for you to make a commitment today uh, to, to, to come consistently and to let us know how consistent you can come.
So, um, like I said, I, like, it's really hard for me to make any commitments. And I, and I feel like this is the first time I feel like a politician where I'm like, I'm not committing to anything. But, um, but I mean, you guys know that anytime you guys have ever called on me, I have like been there and support everything that you guys do. Um, so I, I do plan on being as, being as present as I can. Um, I know some of my resident leaders are part of RPPH, but um, my hope is that all of them will become, um, part of RPPH. And I think that's something that we could also work on as well. Because if they're here, they'll be informing me anyway. And so I think that that is one of the biggest commitments that I wanna make is trying to recruit and ensure that all of my TA leaders in my district are a party, RPPH. Um, and I will definitely try to at least have one of my staff commit to be on it at least like once a month. A month, once every other month, but it is kind of hard because it is a Sunday. Um, so, but I will try my best.
So I, I can definitely, I mean, I can commit. I don't know the frequency, but definitely we can do at least once a month. You know, I, I say that now, having no staff and having no real schedule, despite the crazy schedule that I got down, which Althea peeps.
Schedule. I've seen your schedule and it's crazy.
Staff counts, but I feel like, listen, I think, you know, I appreciate, I, I appreciate the question because the truth of the matter is, is. If we're not making time to engage, right, and to hear directly from the residents and all the ways that that comes, right? We're, we're going to be hearing other things. So I understand why, why that's so important. So yes, I mean, I can, you want me to commit to our frequency or just commit to definitely being present? I am definitely committing to being present. Um. I think we can make once a month work. It seems very possible.
Okay.
When you don't do it, they're gonna call you, tell you.
I know, that's okay. That's, that's what I expect.
Uh, I thought I had the last question, but we're going to close the last question with Ms. Ethel Velas.
Yes, thank you for that. Um, Stevens, you'd mentioned the youth. And the youth is a big part of our development. And one of the things that really needs to be worked on is DYCD. They play a very large role with our young people, with our community centers and how we get to interact with our young people. So I would appreciate it if we could have a serious talk about how DYC operates in our communities.
Oh, absolutely. You know, I, I come from operating community centers that were based in NICA developments. So I'm very aware of the games that they play. I'm very aware of how some say they're not for the community and community centers have become a place. Only for specific things and we need to get back to them being community centers. So I'm very aware and you have my number, so just call me.
Thank you, thank you.
I, I guess I need your number because I definitely want to have that conversation as well.
I'll send you, I'll send you Ethel's number right now.
Excellent. Ms. Stevens, can you put your number in the chat?
Um, if folks need to get in touch with me, I'll put my email address in here. You can email me if, if that's okay.
So one more time, I'm going to share my screen as we close out. See if I go here. Alright, so very quickly. Go through these pledges. Here we are, infrastructure. Um, the infrastructure bill. We are um stepping up our fight with regards to the infrastructure bill. For those of you who may not uh know what I'm talking about. Uh, there are, there is a three trillion dollar spending bill that Congress is uh currently negotiating. Of that, there's about eighty billion dollars uh that was put inside that bill for public housing all across the country. Forty billion of that eighty billion is supposed to come directly here to New York City for NICA. Um, there are rumors and discussions happening now that the housing uh piece of that uh infrastructure bill. Uh, may be taken out. And so we are stepping up our pressure on Congress and Chuck Schumer. Uh, so there is a call to do some phone breaking. Uh, so if you have, um, we're going to be, I'm going to be emailing you some information. Um, with a script and some telephone numbers, you can call so that we can add and put some more pressure. Um, on the federal government to make sure that they do not cut housing out of that spending bill. Uh, next thing I have, sorry, clicking the wrong button. Uh, before we go there, there is something. Uh, I wanted to share with you guys, uh Albany. RPPH is going to be doing some fundraising and some organizing to take a bunch of you up. Uh, to Albany. As you know, we are continuing to fight the Blueprint for Change proposal. Uh, we know or have an uh about an eighty percent. What's what I'm looking for? We, I think we know roughly, we know pretty strongly. That uh the state senate is going to say a senate and the state assembly is going to reintroduce. The legislation for the Public Housing Preservation Trust. Um, and so we want to show up uh with a, one last big uh effort to stop it in Albany. So that'll be happening sometime in January and we're also going to be discussing uh next week. About our trip to Washington DC. Um, last thing before I go to the hands that are raised. Um, is that RPPH meets every Sunday, so please join us, join us, join us, join us on Sundays. We use the exact same link. I'm going to drop that link in the chat box before you go. Uh, but please join us every Sunday. We are here to learn, strategize and build with each other. Um, so with that said, I'm going to go to uh Rosie Mendez followed by Michael.
Alright, so I just wanted to say that I was reading that um Congresswoman Velazquez is working with. Chuck Schumer to double the amount that's, that's in the Build Back Better. Um, but still if it, you know, that's, what is it, eighty million you said? So that's only getting to a hundred and sixty million. So, and, and I'm not quite sure what that is allocated for, if it's capital expense or what. But I just wanted to add that I know the Congresswoman is, is fighting for that.
Yes, absolutely. It is eighty billion and it's eighty billion only for capital, right? Which leaves us still with a huge operating shortfall. Thank you. And then I have Michael.
Hi, everybody. Um, I am just asking if I could please have the, I've been taking, been taking notes. And I'll be sharing all this stuff with Sandy, but if you could please send me the, the pledges, um, so that way I could. Um, you know, get her take on it. I really appreciate it. I dropped my email in the bottom of, on the chat. Thank you.
Perfect. I'm going to add you to our list so too, so you can get our monthly reminders. Uh, so, but yes, I will, so you get it. Alright, I have another treat for you. We have all been excited to hear from our very own uh Rosie Mendez. And as we close out formally, I have some words of wisdom that are going to be shared. Sorry, uh, so much for being on cue. By our very own Mr. Reginald Bowman, who is the senior member of NICA Citywide Council of Presidents. And is also a member of the Residents to Preserve Public Housing. So please join me and give him a warm thank you uh to Mr. Reginald for closing us out. Mr. Bowman, you have the floor.
I guess that's my cue.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody, and how are you all? Um, I'm extremely honored to be given the opportunity to close out the meeting. We've listened to a lot of different things. And I'd like to again commend Rosie Mendez on her leadership. In city government. And I'd also like to commend. Ms. Stevens and Ms. Hudson and Ms. Sables for their courage and um commitment. To go into government and serve our communities because it's something that we really do need, especially during this time. One of the things that I've always focused on as a resident leader. Is making sure that we all understand the necessity of being involved in local government and politics. As we get ready to go forward. And. So I told myself, as I was called on this, to do this at the last minute. To try to stay focused on where we are currently and where we are going in the road ahead. Currently, we are faced with. Similar situation that we've had to deal with over and over again over the last two decades. No funding. A lack of. Management skills in the executive level of the New York City Housing Authority. Um, crumbling infrastructure in our buildings. And certainly, the inability to seem to be able to come up with. Not just a bunch of verbal plans going forward, but. Tangible plans that are going to produce concrete results when it comes to operating and managing. The largest housing authority in the United States. I think in our road ahead as residents, we have decisions that we have to make. I think decision number one is we have to decide what we're going to do. To really set our priorities and how we're going to make our priorities into functional reality. In other words, stop all the nonsensical talking and going around in circles and really find a way. To get. NICA managed and operated the way it should, so that it's going to finally um. Fix and repair our homes, bring them up to standard and then create. The safe and secure housing that was promised to us over and over again. My answer to that is the only ones who are going to be able to do that is us. And what I mean by that simply is we have to take on the challenge once again. To refocusing on our priorities and our capital projects, repairs. Putting it into a lump sum or lump responsibility. And then facing the challenge that we have to find the type of people, institutions, businesses. People in government and leadership that actually have the skills and the know-how. To put into place an operational plan that's not just going to preserve public housing. But that's going to repair and operate it and, and fix the infrastructure the way it's supposed to be done. The only people who are going to be able to do that is us. We've been talking about things for years and years and years and years and, and as I sit here at this point. I'm, I'm closer to seventy than I am to sixty-five. And I think that it's about time that we put things in perspective. And really focus on finding the, not only the legislative and um policy ideas that need to be done. But we have to be able to focus on finding the type of leadership and people with the skills that need to be able to, that, that can operate. Uh, NICA, that can uh take our public policy into the halls of government and get them passed. And we have to certainly strengthen our ability to be able to organize our political force. That we do have in NICA and use it as a tool to finally get things done and reconciled. Um, there are. There are five things that I think we need to focus on going onto the road ahead. Us, we have to be able to set our priorities and get them set so that we can get these things actually done. We have to. Organize and make sure that we get all of the resident leadership and resident government and residents of NICA. Banded together in a unified force. That requires the third thing, which is setting up. Communications and information.
Bowman, Mr. Bowman, I can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
Ms. Ethel, it might be you because we.
E- everybody who can't hear me. Please raise your hand.
Okay, Ms. Ethel, we'll troubleshoot with this Ethel. Mr. Bowman, you can continue.
Okay. As I was saying, we need to, we have to follow some specific steps. If we're going to go forward, and this is a critical time for us, Ms. Mendez made a very important observation. And I try to echo this observation as frequently as possible. If we don't get certain things done in the buildings of New York City Housing Authority. Some of them are so old that in another few years, they can be condemned and demolished and that will be the end of it. I think it's important for us to make sure that we get communication systems and information systems together. And that in doing that, we need to make sure that we have a seriously organized and well-thought-out and well. Documented plan for how we would like to see NICA not only um funded. But also we have to come to the realization that one of the biggest problems that NICA faces. Is not so much the funding problem, but the fact that we've had a monolith at, at, at two fifty Broadway. That has produced over and over again, a group of people that cannot manage the responsibility of. Operating and, and, and making sure that a uh portfolio of three hundred developments. Is operated in a way that um meets certain standards. And that's a fact that we've had to face. Until we really put people in charge of the housing authority. That actually know what they're doing, uh, we're going to continue to have the same problems, no matter how much money we put into it. I think it's important also for us to. Make sure that organizations like RPPH. That have experienced organizers like Mr. Jenkins and others are. Taken under the responsibility or take, undertake the responsibility of organizing our residents citywide. Under an umbrella that can be utilized as a mobilized force of people. That can influence government and uh the other institutions. That are responsible for operating NICA and funding NICA. Without having an organized, a really organized base, we are over a million people strong in public housing. Yet we are not as effective in politics and. In a government as we used to be twenty years ago when we were organized. We have to make sure that we realize our, we realize our strength by organizing ourselves. We also have to make sure that in all of that, we have to put together a legislative policy agenda and budget agenda. That's non-compromised. I know that we talked about a pledge. But in addition to a pledge, we have to have documentation and uh a, a package. That we can take to the city government, the state government and the federal government. To make sure that these are things that we are expecting from our elected officials and we're not going to take any. We're not going to take no for an answer anymore. Most of us who live. In Manhattan and in Brooklyn and in Queens have been seeing the skyline around us change every day. We see developers putting housing up everywhere. We see developers building skyscrapers everywhere. We see developers. Managing and maintaining these structures in the city of New York everywhere. And in the twenty-first century, that, that we are one-fifth of the way through the twenty-first century. There's no reason in the world why the housing authority can't be run as a five-star agency. The same way these other institutions and facilities and buildings are run in the city of New York. So in closing. I think that we need to move towards improved strategic planning. For the standardized delivery of services and information to all residents in the New York City Housing Authority. And in my opinion, the only way to really do that, in addition to making sure that we put the right people in the right places. In, in government, we have to get ourselves organized and have our plan together. So that we can operate in the twenty-first century as the giant in public policy that we really should be. So. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be able to address you as a group. I applaud all of the things that have been accomplished by RPPH in the last. I applaud all of the things that have been accomplished by RPPH in the last twelve to eighteen months. You've been doing a phenomenal job. And hopefully, we can continue to work together to make sure that as we travel on this road ahead in public housing, that we get ourselves together as residents and resident leaders and organize our powers and our strengths to be able to influence public policy, to be able to make sure that we get funded and to make sure that we put the proper people in place in the management and operation of the housing authority going forward. And like I used to always say, and I still have this button that I still wear to this day, united we stand, divided, we're going to be homeless. We need to get ourselves together and move forward and let's make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we close. But if you want to, we're gonna be hanging on for another hour off the record of Facebook and off recording. So hang out in what I call happy hour. Thank you all so much for joining us today. I hope you will join us again next Sunday. Have a blessed day.
Marquis, are you recording? Okay.
Almost.
Okay.
All right, folks, now tell me how you're feeling.
Your recording, your recording, your recording button is still flashing.
Uh, hold on, I'm gonna stop it.